Okay. Evening, everyone. This is Town of Dayton Board of Health regular meeting. As I told it to put special meeting, I'm sorry, this is a special meeting being held at Old Town Hall Upper Level Meeting Room 1111 Somerset Avenue, Dayton. This is also a remote participation Zoom meeting. It is a public meeting being recorded for cable broadcast and internet posting on www.dighton-mass.gov and YouTube. Zoom meeting number is 820-6370-4865. Zoom meeting passcode I09097. Zoom dial-in number 19292056099. We'll now call the meeting to an order, and would you mind, please, joining us in a pledge of allegiance to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on mission, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, in justice.
Thanks, everyone. Just to recognize everybody here, on my right is Town Administrator Mike Mullen.
Hey, everyone. Excuse me. Oh, I said hello. I'm sorry.
On my left is Member Kevin Bernato and myself, Thomas Pires, also member and chairman of the board. On our TV tonight, we have with us Chico, Chairman of Board of Selectmen, and Dr. Brett Zografus. And I'm sure he's a member of the Board of Selectmen at this point, or clerk. Member.
Member.
Okay. Yeah. Can you hear us okay? Okay.
We can't hear them.
We had sound problems the other night because we were up there and he's...
So we can't hear them, then, right?
Yeah, we can hear them. We should be able to hear them.
Yes.
For the regular meeting now?
And is that okay? How's the audio on your end?
Okay. It's great.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, we've got speaker right here. Yeah.
For the regular meeting, Board of Selectmen is also present at the meeting.
Thank you. We have our first applicant, Barbara Catabia. Come on up, Barbara. Apologize, Lenny, I don't usually recognize residents in the... But anyway.
I'm here.
Okay, now that you know everybody, we'll begin the process. I'll start, I think. Please tell us about yourself, your education and work experience, and how you feel this has prepared you for the position of Board of Health member for the Town of Dayton.
Okay, I did attend UMass specializing in animal sciences and also soil sciences way back when in 1966. Also gone to Northeastern in landscaping design for a winter course. Had a company with my husband installing septic systems, doing a lot of excavating, also the agriculture aspect of it for over 50 years, raised over 100 acres of butternut squash, which we processed, stop and shop, delivering six days a week to the Blue Hills in Boston. And through the years, I've done a lot of little things here and there, wide experience. Also had a food trailer for about seven years. I did a lot of the fairs in the areas, Fair Town up at Seacombe, some of the big auctions, wide variety of food, so I enjoy that. And I've been around, I've worked with a lot of engineers, designs, contractors over the years in a number of surrounding towns and cities, not just Dayton. So I kind of know how things work, how the paperwork goes, how the designs, how to redesigns, how to decipher designs. At times, we've even, as an install, looked at designs and requested different changes to designs also, such as when there's a septic pump-up system, we would go in and look at the cellar of the house and see if we could raise the interior piping so that we'd be gravity-fed instead of pumping it up. Some of the designers, the engineers, don't look at that aspect, and therefore it saves the homeowner thousands and thousands of dollars. But, and I really feel I would be a help to the board in my wide range of experience and knowing quite a few people in town and quite a few of the installers, contractors, the companies we deal with. Of course, everything's always changing, and you always have to keep up. It's not saying it stays the same, so you have to keep up to what's going on.
You answered number two also, didn't you?
How about any experience working with the Department of Public Health and any other local boards of health?
I have to work with them for all the food. Every time you go to another town with your food trailer, you have to apply, such as Seacombe takes approximately three months to get a permit. It's very rigid. And the same with installing septics. You have to go before the board in some cases, and you have to work very closely with the inspectors and also the whole department in scheduling inspections.
Do you have any experience working with the Department of Public Health at the state level?
No, no. The Department of Agriculture at the state level I do have.
That makes sense.
Please describe your experience with Title V and septic systems, and if you hold any previous or previously held any licenses such as inspector or installer.
Yes, installer for over 35 years, Title V, inspector, I would say about 18 years, 17 years. And I inspected in a lot of different towns in the surrounding area, including Prudence Island. They sent me to Prudence Island once, don't ask me why, but they wanted it done. It was all paid for, I said, okay.
It'll take the ferry to get there.
Yeah. Ferry and a tour.
I guess a follow-up question that I'm just...
Yeah.
Are you currently, are you certified right now?
No, I'm not. I let it go since Lenny, my husband, passed away. And at the time, I just felt it was too overwhelming. Now I'm kind of calmed down and into my own little groove again, so I have no problem with getting recertified at all.
Okay. Most of public health protocols, specifically those related to COVID-19 to which the Board of Health is adhering to, have been promulgated by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the federal government. Would you have any difficulty enforcing any local, state, or federal health protocol that you do not agree with?
No, not at all. Actually, I aided in Taunton when they gave the booster shot. They came with the bus, the state bus, and it was at BP, and I was asked to go and help, and I did.
Oh, sorry.
No. You want to go? Go.
It's okay, you're the chair, I'll let you speak.
This position requires the fair and unbiased application of public health statutes, regulations, policies, and town bylaws. Enforcement may become a problem with some restaurants, homeowners, businesses, et cetera. What skills do you have that would enable you to effectively deal with residents or business owners who do not agree with you?
Fifty years, when you tell a person their septic system has failed, and they're almost crying and crying and saying, where am I getting this money from? In Dayton, I don't know if we still have it, but we aid them and give them a low-cost loan.
You have the betterment, yes.
Yeah, and I did a lot of, especially elderly people, helping them get through that process. Yeah, because I wouldn't want it done to me either, you know, you're trying to get along, and all of a sudden your septic's overflowing, and you have to do something. And I really try to help them all. I do, it's just how I was.
Do you think you consider yourself to have good people skills?
Oh, definitely, definitely. You know, on the farm, I had as many as 30 people working, and then when we were doing the snow and ice contract for the state, which we took all 138, we took care of them and the Braga Bridge, and we had 17 trucks running. So trying to handle 17 guys, making sure they get out there in 45 minutes and stay out there sometimes two and three days, you really have to have some people skills.
So although extremely rare, individuals appointed as a Board of Health member must make a commitment to be available for emergencies or other circumstances that require their Do you feel, do you feel you have enough flexibility to do this?
Definitely, definitely. My life is a multitude of things, and I'm fairly free to go and do as I please, and it doesn't bother me to get up at 2:00 in the morning if there's a problem, or 3:00 in the morning, or any other time.
Yeah, that's happened in my four years here, you know, that I've been called out to help out or make some decisions, but it's very rare, but we do expect her to be able to commit to that.
No problem, there's no problem with that.
Take your time. There are many facets of public health that are outlined in the job description that requires a basic understanding of food protection, public health emergency preparedness, community sanitation, minimum housing standards, animal control, stormwater, landfill management, swimming pools, and septic systems. Please describe any experience, training, or certificates you may now hold or have held in the past.
Well, it's the Title V and then the inspector of septics. The installation with the food trailer, we had, we handled quite a bit of variety. It was frozen ice cream and all types of meats we cooked. Everything was different, and we complied to every single town around here, and some of them are really stringent, extremely stringent.
I remember the food truck. Do you still hold your surf safe?
Yep, surf safe.
Do you still have the allergy awareness?
Yep.
Okay.
Those are still in effect.
In the good for whatever, but it's five, every year, every five years?
Five years.
Okay.
Sure.
Has the COVID pandemic impacted the way you interact with your clients and/or customers? If so, please explain.
More cautious. More cautious is such the mask, the hand washing, not touching any door handles. That's why I wear long gloves, long sleeves, like tuck it in, open the handle. Yeah, of course, we all have to be more cautious.
Okay. You have any questions for us?
No. Pretty calm with you guys.
Okay.
I kind of have been in front of the board a couple of different times, here and other towns, so.
You have any follow-up questions, Mike, you want to ask?
No, I don't have any follow-up questions, Mr. Chairman.
Seven. I would just say, you read the job description, you understand that when we meet and the different certifications we're looking for, even though some might not have them now, but moving forward.
No, I'd be really interested in taking a lot more classes to keep up with everything, because you know and I know, everything changes all the time. Title V changes.
Definitely.
And different towns have different specifications, so definitely I would like to take classes. That's something I just like to, I like to learn, like I've always told my grandchildren, learn something every day and you'll never be bored. And I really feel that way.
Yeah, I think you're gonna, well, there's quite a bit of training, but we try to put it out over a few months.
Yep.
Even up to a year, I think, on one of them.
So that's fine with me, I'm extremely interested in that, extremely.
Yeah. Emergency preparedness, we haven't, we used to have drills, and we really don't have that anymore because of this COVID business, but it's an all-around, in my opinion, everything that happens in this town is somehow related to public health.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, from mosquitoes to tornadoes to ticks and everything else, so... But thank you for applying, and I'll let you know, all right?
Can I go now?
You may.
Six.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Ladies and gentlemen, next caller to your next senior.
Well, I hope Paul was early that way there, we can get through this.
Can I have this one?
Oh, yeah, I didn't make enough, did I?
I bought some extras.
Oh, did you? Made copies.
Thirty is the second one. Can you see this? Probably take something out of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, let's do that, let's take...
Make a motion to take item number four on the agenda, recommendation for contact tracer interview team, and make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, I'll step down a second, that motion. Motion's been made to take item four. I had it, I lost it. Item number four out of order, which is the recommendation, discuss recommendation from the contact tracer interview team and make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor? Aye. Kevin Bernato is an aye. Thomas Pires is also an aye. So we'll submit that to the Board of Selectmen for their review once they open their meeting. Is that all they're doing tonight?
So they have that on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, and then they have the updated employee COVID-19 protocols as well, which have been updated since last month.
Item number five, we're gonna make a, we should make a decision tonight on who we're selecting for a Board of Health member, but we will be making that recommendation to the Board of Selectmen for next week on the 12th.
At our regular meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
At their regular meeting.
Yes, at their regular meeting.
Yeah, so we'll be acting on the recommendation tonight, though, yes.
About a few minutes?
Something like that.
Do you want to have a recess, Mr. Chairman?
I'm thinking about public input, because I don't know if anybody else is coming, so... What's all your... Public input? Nothing?
I attended the... It's fully informed as to what's happening.
Move to recess till 5:30? Thank, some of, I'll step down, second motion. All in favor? Aye. Mr. Bernato's an aye, Mr. Pires is an aye, we'll be in recess till 5:30. We develop...
Here we are, we're back, time is now 5:29.
Okay, get back to business with the interviews. So, you know, we developed some questions. You're both being asked the same questions. So I'll begin, and first one is, please tell us about yourself, your education and work experience, and how you feel this has prepared you for the position of Board of Health member for the Town of Dayton.
I worked construction for years in septic systems. I've been on boards with the town. I feel like I like to do a service to the town, and I'd want to pick the right person for it, too. You know? This is more for the town, for me. I was doing it for the town, honestly. When I took the application out, I didn't think anybody else had applied. Then later on, I found out Barbara had applied, and I know she's moved off, by the way.
Well, we discussed this, and who and I can let you guys know, but it's always good to let your... Maybe there's something in what you're gonna tell us that could make a difference, you know? You never know until you interview people.
Right.
Please describe any past experience you have working with a local Board of Health and/or the Massachusetts Department of Public Health.
I've never worked with the Department of Public Health. The only thing I've done with local Board of Health was when I did septic systems. That was back in mid-'80s.
Were you licensed back then? Were you a licensed installer? Okay, you didn't, I didn't, because you didn't put it on your resume, I was looking for that.
I thought I got it.
Well, so you did systems.
Yeah.
But you weren't...
Right.
Okay. Okay. And you did that for yourself or with a company?
For myself.
Okay. You didn't, well, did you do any of that for Loops? You said you had worked for them.
No, I worked for them before I went into business.
Okay.
I went to work for them when I was 15, and...
Fifteen?
Yeah, when I was 20, I bought my own dump truck. Then when the auction moved in, I got out of construction, set home, cars, and started doing the site.
You can do number three. Describe your experience with Title V and septic systems, and if you hold or previously held any licenses such as inspector or installer. We kind of talked about it.
Yeah, kind of redundant.
Yeah. When I did the septic systems, Title V, so I don't have any experience with Title V. I installed, I can read the plans, I understand elevations and all that needs to be done, but as far as, I've never been licensed for Title V, and I've never done them back then.
Okay. You used to read plans, and you're familiar with the...
Yeah.
You said elevation.
Right, I can read a set of plans, go off the bench, Bob.
Logan.
Most of public health protocols, specifically those related to COVID-19 to which the Board of Health is adhering to, have been promulgated by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the federal government. Would you have any difficulty enforcing any local, state, or federal health protocol that you do not agree with?
A lot in that question.
I don't make the laws.
Yeah.
I would enforce it.
Okay. Sometimes I think we're forced to make some tougher decisions, and you'd be fine with making decisions like that?
Whatever is in the best interest of the town.
Five, then you can do it. Still ready to... This position requires the fair and unbiased application of public health statutes, statutes, rather, regulations, policies, and town bylaws. Enforcement may become a problem with some restaurants, homeowners, businesses, et cetera. What skills do you have that would enable you to effectively deal with residents or businesses that, who do not agree with you?
Well, when I was on Water Commission, we dealt with a lot of people that didn't agree with us, but would have to explain it to them. I've been in business since I was 20 years old, so 39 years I've dealt with difficult customers. I know how to deal with them. We got to keep them calm and just find that this is what we need to do.
Okay. Anybody have any follow-ups with that? No.
So although extremely rare, individuals appointed as a Board of Health member must make a commitment to be available for emergencies or other circumstances that require their prompt attention. Do you feel that there's enough flexibility in your schedule to be able to meet this commitment?
As I told the previous applicant, it's so rare, I think I've done it in four years, four times. So it's like month to year, you know, but there may be a time when you need to get out there and make some decisions as a board on depending on the situation, so.
I know, if we're getting a water commissioner, you get calls all the time.
Yeah, I know. Seven. There are many facets of public health that are outlined in the job description that requires a basic understanding of food protection, public health emergency preparedness, community sanitation, minimum housing standards, animal control, stormwater, landfill management, swimming pools, and septic systems. Please describe any experience, training, or certificates you may now hold or have held in the past.
Other than the one to install septic systems, I don't have any of these.
Okay. Commissioner?
Yes.
And I remember seeing, I apologize, from your resume, you held one other office?
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee.
And the Bylaw Committee.
How long were you on the Finance Committee?
Three years.
And the Bylaw Committee?
The Bylaw Committee, I think, is seven.
Okay.
And three years, Water Commissioner.
That's still semi-alive. The Bylaw Committee, never, I started that back in 2007.
Yeah, it was either 2007 or 2008. Somewhere around there, yes.
Yeah, like has, oh, yeah, has the COVID pandemic impacted the way you interact with your clients and customers? If so, please explain.
Ah, yes, it's, we've done a lot, kept distance, do more work over the internet than anything else now, ship a lot of packages and stuff, hand-delivered.
Just for, I'm just gonna ask this question, because I indicated vinyl graphics, how's that going with this COVID? Are we able to still function as...
It's coming back.
Okay.
Better than the cars, with no chips.
That's a whole other world right now.
It's good right now.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for any of us or the Board of Health?
Regular decision of the town.
Want to add anything?
No.
Okay. Thank you for your interest in the position.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will say this, whatever happens this evening, we will have a vacancy again in June, and we'll be putting out another notice of applications to, this is what I want.
For interested applicants?
Yeah, that's a good one, interested applicant, so.
So, yeah, within six months, there'll be another opening.
You said, I wasn't doing it for me, most of the time.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you for applying.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night. Oh, Paul Pacheco?
Pacheco, sorry. You should know that.
I had to bring him for to be out here. All right, thank you. Okay, we did item three and four. No, I'm sorry, four, five, and six, then went into recess, so our last duty for this evening was to select a applicant for a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen for Board of Health member.